So, Howard, can they have roles here, please? Carrie.
Nancy DiAmone.
Here.
Roger Smith.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
Here.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Joan Eberetta.
Here.
Please stand for political allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. So first we have recognition of visitors and people turn the room to Mrs. Asire.
Yes, actually I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hulter who is going to introduce the parent and community engagement committee and welcome up to presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, my pleasure to introduce Sarah Donnell, our committee chair, and the parent and community engagement committee will be coming up with her to highlight this evening some of the activities that we are going to be doing throughout the year to engage our community and our parents in our schools, again, to support student success. You know, the number one factor is our parents' support for student success and it starts there, so we greatly appreciate that, and our community's support has been critical for our success as well as the district.
This is part of our lovely committee that we have for the parent and community engagement, and this year we have been really lucky to have two very dedicated parents from Smoke Tree who have volunteered, and they are here with us tonight to help her to present our goals for the annual plan. Community and family involvement promotes and supports the social, emotional, physical, academic, and even the occupational growth of the youth in our district. Successful involvement relies on our meaningful collaboration between the youth, families, schools, and the agencies within our community. The definition of family has changed over the last couple of decades. Families now can consist of stepparents, grandparents, other extended families, as well as step siblings. Any child that considers and relies on anyone to be family is who we are geared towards helping and seeking to have a positive role model for. There also has been a significant shift in how we view support and who does the supporting. We are looking towards what schools and communities can do for families, not just what families can do for schools. Our goal is to develop a partnership with families that nurture and support all children to learn and grow. A successful partnership reflects an understanding of great diversity among our families. Each school's individual approach helps to build a strong connection to improve the outcome for the youth. Tonight we're here just to highlight some of the varied approaches used throughout the district to engage families and the communities in our children's success.
Yes, this one for yours.
So these are our committee members, as well as our parent representatives, and we also have Title I liaisons at the majority of the schools that are Title I. Standard one. Yes. Okay. Our standard one is welcoming all families into the school community, and we do that by district-wide activities. We all have back-to-school nights and open house. Have a SUI by Dr. Seuss night and science night. At Jamaica, we also have Read Across America night, Pumpkin Patch, the Apex Winter Wonderland, and our math day. Nautilus is math and science night as well, Fall Fun Fair movie night, Oregon Family Breakfast, Science Expo, Family Math, and Literacy Night. Smoke Tree Family Reading Nights, and Dr. Seuss again, Read In, Math Night, and STEM Club. Starlane has Parent Information Night, Grandparents Day, Winter Festival, Free Family Fun Night, Science Fair, and the Intervention Convention. Thunderbolt has the 7th grade orientation, Parent Night, and Destination Decades Cross-Curricular Fair, Teen Leadership Readers at the Door, and the High School Annual Bring Your Parents to School Day. Yep. I have to clear. Okay, standard two, Communicating Effectively. A lot of things we do are the same, like Oregon, we do Remind, Facebook, we do Parent Orientation, Open House, orientations before school starts. Most of us do the same thing, some of schools do Edmodo, daily agendas, different behavior things, synergy. As you can see at the top, it's those common district things we do throughout the family school. Well, I can say three. Standard three is supporting student success, and the common goals that we have are parent teacher conferences at all the schools, PBIS, Parks and Rec enrichment, and NOVA. Those are primarily at elementary levels, but we do include Parks and Rec and NOVA and the police department. And Nautilus, they have capturing kids' hearts throughout a few of the different schools. They have that, as well as quarterly assemblies, Title I tutoring. Smoke Tree has their Cougar Cafe. Thunderbolt has their Teen Leadership, and then the High School Desert, they invite parents to breakfast and lunch with the community, as well as they have their sophomore and student of the month. Hello. Standard four, Speaking Up For Every Child, and there's a lot of common district activities. PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Intervention Support. SIT, Student Intervention, where they need to teach them together with some specialists to put brains together on what they can do, or how they can set up a plan. Interagency, SAP groups. I have SUI, our school, we have the Heart and Parent Resource Library. I'm out looking at Parent Resource Library at every night that we have any kind of open house, or every event that we have at the school, handing out, we have a big brochure, a big display with brochures with specific things that we can go over with parents, and I try to target those parents on specific brochures, not that they're going to read them, but they're going to get them in their hand, and they may pick them up again. And then there's just a lot, they have Parent Resource Libraries on a lot of the other schools. Mojave Mental Health Vision Assistance, Nighttime Advisory, Anti-Bullying Clubs at the high school. Lot of similarities.
Standard five is sharing partners. This is where we come together with our parents and our community members and come up with plans for each individual school. At Smoke Tree, we have our Title I committee, district committees, we have PTSO, Booster Club site committees, obviously PACE, and these are all just trying to get our parents involved in helping improve our schools and activities.
Standard six is collaborating with the community. Our common district activities, pet partners, fire safety, interagency, NOVA, and ASU. Well, if you notice, you'll see Big Brothers, Big Sisters up there, quite a bit. And at Oregon, the high schoolers have reading buddies with Oregon kids, Juana's.
Smoke Tree has community members for annual Read In and Parent University. Starline has the Patriotic Club, Elks, Rotary, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. Thunderbolt has an 8th grade career fair, 7th grade student of the month with elk, NJHS, the Destination Decades. And then at the high school, we have NHHS Day of Service with the freshman class and job shadowing, CT Open House, the BIGS Club, SWAT, which is students working against tobacco, coffee with counselors, and then also we have more than one community based service club.
So our whole mission is really to get people and ideas together and combine them and improve the world around us, so naturally we took a couple quotes and put them together. What we have is, when schools, families, and communities work together to support learning, children tend to do better in school, stay in school longer, and like school more. So we look forward to having as many community members and parents and educators working together to improve our schools from here on out.
Thank you. Okay, we have SUI Education Association, Carol over there, you walked.
Well, because what I was printing, it didn't print, it's just programming, I think because I was refreshing, refreshing.
Well, you're refreshing with the West. We heard it was 49 votes were up on our override, right?
Yes. Yay. Well, I love the fact that I followed the parent group because this is American Education Week, and today is actually Parent Day recognition, so, and funny that they showed that last quote because that is the same quote that I got. So, so it is powerful that we need to collaborate. We do have tomorrow is professional, Support Professional Day, our educational support professional day, and we will be recognizing them though on Thursday because we are looking forward to listening to our superintendent tomorrow night at ASU. She will be providing us her vision, for like she has a teacher, and that is Friday at ASU. So that's what our plan is tomorrow. And then follow Thursday with supporting our educational staff at Guardians Angels, and send that out to the staff, all right? But again, you guys want to, so, keep refreshing, and we're up to 49.
Okay, and I have a couple calls to the public. Applications, do you have any other ones, Carrie? Just another one out there. Okay, so, under the call to the public, forms must be turned in, and that's what these are, if anybody else needs to do anything, they're out there. And at this time, comments are restricted to items that are on the agenda, so these things are not, these topics are not on the agenda, but our comments are only restricted to clarification or directing staff in that capacity. So we'll go ahead with the first one here. I have Mr. Hertel, and he wants to talk to us about racial issues up at the high school. Mr. Hertel?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dr. Dani Hertel, and again, I'm here to speak to you about an issue that comes from a very personal place. As a former school district administrator, as well as a very concerned parent, I realize I have a very small window of time to address these very serious concerns, so in turn. I am the parent of a minority student, specifically, I'm the parent of an African-American student who's had a very difficult time adjusting to life in Lake Havasu since we moved here. Within the first few weeks of school, she came home reporting frequency of divisive and oftentimes racially hostile and inappropriate statements being made on school grounds by teachers and even more so by students. Most recently, Tuesday, November 8, 2016, I was notified about two racist and extremely derogatory social media posts that were allegedly made and posted on school grounds, and one perhaps that was even posted during the school day. Specifically, the social media posts in question made specific references to, quote, "niggers and illegals." I made contact by email to the district superintendent and the administrators of the high school about the post, and I requested acknowledgement and next steps. Unfortunately, my email went unanswered. Moreover, I was informed by an administrator through my daughter that the administrator informed her that the district could not intervene because those students were protected by their First Amendments. I forwarded my concerns about the issue regarding the governing, regarding this issue to the governing board, and I received a response from the school leadership. I finally received a response from the district's leadership, and I almost immediately had paused with the response I received. I initially requested an opportunity to meet with the district group leadership to address my concerns in hopes of offering my support for any initiative that would seek to remove, to move this issue forward. Instead, I received notice from that leader that this person had a very small window of time to meet with me to address my concern, and I do not believe this issue is one that can be accurately addressed within a small window of time. I specifically emailed to that administrator. I made sincere efforts to follow the chain of command by notifying you and your Lake Havasu school administrators about my concern regarding the appearance of racial hostility, but unfortunately, my overtures went unaddressed. Fortunately, someone from the governing board felt as though this was an issue which required your immediate involvement, as I did, when I sent my first correspondence on Tuesday, November 8, 2016. At any rate, I have more than a few items of significance to discuss with you, and this meeting will require a little more than a small window of time. If you feel as though this issue of student racial hostility can wait two weeks to be addressed, please let me know, and I'll plan my schedule accordingly to meet with you. We as adults cannot expect students to understand the complexity and harm in their language. If administrators charge the guy to teach them, simply ignore the issue. I realize race is a very difficult issue to discuss, but we simply cannot risk continuing to alienate minority groups by ignoring them and their concerns because school district administrators are unaware, unconcerned, or simply have no desire to acknowledge the racist and hateful speech being spoken on campuses across this district every day. I'm concerned by the appearance that this district does not have a diverse faculty or administration. I'm concerned by the appearance this district does not provide diversity training to its faculty and administrators. I'm concerned by the appearance that minority students are disproportionately impacted by this district's failure to address their cultural identification. I'm concerned, it appears, this district does not believe there's a racial, there's racial hostility and exclusion of minority students. I am hopeful we can make efforts to address and make this district that we all support and believe in, one we can support when we read the mission statement. Thank you.
All right. Just a couple points of clarification. Immediately when I received your email over the weekend, I forwarded it to the superintendent who responded to you, and then did a little bit of research and found that you had already met with the administration up at the high school, and they had, from what I understand, thought that they took care of the situation to a point. Mrs. Asire sent you an email asking, telling you about the times that she had available, one of them being that her Friday afternoon was free, but she still hadn't received a response back from you to, before this meeting, just to set up a time to speak with her about this. And so I just wanted that point clarified because we are not ignoring you, we're trying to engage, and the fact that you're saying that the school administration ignored you, I don't think they did either. So I just wanted to get that cleared up. And Mrs. Asire, did you have any other point you wanted to make?
No, that's okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next topic, or next speaker would be Mr. Dale Ray.
My name is Dale Ray, and I am the senior pastor at Lakeview Community Church. I have been a resident of Lake Havasu since 1972, and my wife and I are the proud parents of two and soon to be grandparents of seven. My children were raised here in the school system, and my sincere thank you to the school board, who, some of them actually know my children and have steered them very beautifully through the course of their education. To you teachers, thank you for all that you do as well, too. It's very much appreciated. My children are both very successful, and I attribute their success to a great upbringing and a great education that they received right here in Lake Havasu City. My concern tonight stems to the subject that first came out in the newspaper a couple weeks ago on meditation being offered at the Lake Havasu High School. And then I was approached that same weekend by a family who asked if I could explain to their children what meditation was and the difference between biblical meditation and the meditation that is based in eastern philosophy. It's very simple because the biblical definition of meditation is taken from Philippians in chapter four. That reminds us to set our mind on things above, things that are good, things that are pure, things that are lovely. If there's anything that is good, it says that you're to meditate very specifically on these things. The eastern philosophy has a very different approach. In fact, the ultimate goal of eastern philosophy is nothingness. It is to be at one with the universe, which in effect is oblivion. The eastern philosophy meaning of meditation would be that in one's mind, at some point you begin to experience guides to lead you along the path. The human mind is a very innovative thing, and left to its own devices can lead in a number of different directions on the district guide that do lead you along the way. So I'm very concerned when I hear that meditation is being offered in the school, and it's based being that of eastern philosophy. There's great effort to go to make sure that there's a separation between church and state in the school system. In fact, for many, many years, we no longer can call it Christmas or Easter, we refer to it as winter or spring, or something that is very generic, may not have anything to do with Christianity in the classroom. And so therefore, I am very, very concerned that meditation is being offered in the high school, and it came to mind today that it may be experimented with in the elementary school level as well, too. I love the opportunity. When I was a child, we had the reading of songs in school, and we were invited to participate and to ease our mind with a scriptural passage. That's long since been tabooed, and so we don't have that any longer. The practice of meditation and the introduction of it in the Lake Havasu school system is not new. In fact, my wife and I were very active with the school programs while our children were in school, and made sure that we participated. And again, thank you teachers, and for all the parents who do participate with you. It is a great help when parents do that, and I always encourage the folks of my congregation to make sure that you're involved with your teachers and with the school system. But as I said, meditation is not something that is new. In fact, in the eighties, there was a program called ILAC, I Am Loveable and Capable. It was introduced in the elementary school systems, and a part of that even, the ILAC, which of course was meant to be something that was reaffirming to the students, but they were invited to meditate back in those days as well, too. And in fact, part of the program included the Humanist Manifesto. Strange that faith cannot be included in the classroom, or that what we would call the Christian faith, but you can have the Humanist Manifesto included in the 1980s in that program. It was my understanding, I don't know if it was true, but in those days, it was in the high school as well, and so I'm very concerned that it's being reintroduced again. And so my ask, or what I'm asking of the school board is that this would be investigated and that it would not continue. Thank you all.
Yes.
Could I respond to that?
Yes, if you have a clarification or a question.
I do.
Okay.
Do I just go walk up here?
You may.
Hi.
Good evening, my name's Jenny Sotner, and I'm actually a certified mindfulness educator. I got my certification through Mindful Schools, did the Essentials course, and then the Trainers course, along with two other teachers at the high school. I really want to thank you for coming tonight and expressing your concerns. I think that the article in the paper, while well-intentioned and well-meaning, might have been a little misleading. Mine in the paper referenced the Hindu origins of it, and that is not actually origins of the mindful schools. All of the, it's science-based and based in neuroscience. And so there's a big movement right now for mindfulness in the sense of increasing attention and focus. Lives are really fast-paced. Our students are pulled in in a lot of different directions, teachers. There's a conference recently I went to called the Mindful, and some teachers are reading that about the process of reflective, pausing, and I think that those are valuable qualities for students, you know, attention, focus, and there's actually the guidelines for the secular teaching of mindfulness. So they are really, they do, kind of what you were talking about, this going down this road of incorporating religion into the schools is really not the direction of mindfulness. And it says that the objective is to support the well-being of students and educators developing an attitude of inquiry about how the mind works. So thinking about like metacognition, how the brain works, being able to calm that sympathetic response when you have the flight or fight response, even when you're given a test, sometimes students feel that stress, and just by taking five slow, deep breaths, the fastest way to calm the nervous system. And I think those are tools that we want students to have to be able to be successful. And again, I really appreciate you coming and expressing those concerns because I agree, I would not want any kind of institutionalized religion being taught in the classes, but I think that providing students with tools for how to cope with stress, how to increase their focus and attention on things is a benefit, and the inclusion of that is, it would be like several minutes, like I do on Mindful Monday, so it's, we're talking about three to four minutes once a week. I don't, it's not like a major part of curriculum, if that helps answer any questions.
I think that was, did that answer your questions, Dale?
It answers. Will you, can you make any materials available to the concerned community and to the parents?
Yes, absolutely, I think that we could do that, sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I add something on that? So I just, I want everyone to be reflective, or be mindful, of the amount of stress and stimuli that are in teenagers between screens, and what happened with their boyfriend, and their job, and their switching classes, and really, we know that stress has such a negative effect, and sometimes a negative permanent effect on its brains. And so we really, this is not a religious experience, this is about stopping and teaching kids to appreciate the moment that they're in now, and be able to have attention to the task that they're in. And this is a really important tool, more so now than it's ever become, because there are so many different stimuli that kids are having to fight over, and we just want to get them back so they can appreciate themselves and take care of themselves, because we know that they're, they're over, you know, they're overstimulated. And so, you know, this was, this was how the article was written, but this was never how it was actually delivered in class.
Thank you. Okay, and I think there's another, Tony, is it Ravello or?
Ravello.
Ravello.
Hi.
Good evening, my name is Tony Ravello, my wife Toni and I are here. Actually, we're going to piggyback on to the back of what Pastor Dale said. Before I do that, congratulations to the board, the district, and the community on the passage of the bond and the order. That's a phenomenal thing for our community, we've been all fighting for it a long time. It's a great thing for our teachers here, who've been working long and hard with no pay raises, so through those to you guys, I'm looking forward to that. And my sons have been forward to playing on the new football stadium. Today, he said, have you seen the plan? It's Mrs. Sotner, right?
Yes.
That did a good job in explaining maybe what their intentions are. But I'm not going to try to elaborate much more on what Pastor Dale said, but as a, as a Christian man who tries to lead his family down the right path, I was just very concerned with the utilization of the meditation practices in the high school and what I'm hearing in other aspects of the school. And so I just, and I appreciate Mr. Becker, I called and I just addressed him directly. He was kind enough to return my phone call, we had a great conversation, I appreciate him taking time to hear my concerns, and... I'm sure you guys know that better than anybody, but not every parent takes the time to be involved in their kid's education. So when we are, I appreciate callbacks and teachers that are willing to listen and I appreciate your time letting me come up and my wife just kind of express our concerns with it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming because, you know, when you see something like that and you sometimes get a different idea of what's happening, this is the best thing to do is to confront it, find out the information. And so I appreciate you taking your time to do that. And thank you, Jenny, for clarifying and Jamie. Okay, let's move on then to action items, approval of the consent calendar. Could we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Terry?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 4.1, second presentation and review of new policy JRR student surveys. Mrs. Walter.
Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended the board approve the second presentation of the new policy JRR student surveys. There's not been any changes since the first presentation.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve 4.1 as presented.
Second. Any questions or comments? Terry?
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 4.3, second presentation and review of revised policy IKE RB promotion and retention of students.
This is the second presentation of this policy, again with no changes. This is the policy that allows intervention and remedial services during the summer for third graders who are not proficient so that they may move on if they demonstrate sufficient progress.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
I move that we approve item 4.3 as presented.
Second. Questions?
When does that become an issue? I mean, by that, I mean, when is the, is the testing been done or?
In the policy, third graders have to demonstrate proficiency where they can be promoted and there are several criteria that can be used for them to demonstrate proficiency, but if they still do not at the end of third grade, it gives them an opportunity for intervention during the summer. And that intervention allows that if they are showing progress that they may be moved.
But what I'm asking is that, was that effective last year or is it coming up?
This is coming up effective this year. Yes, thank you.
So we don't have any numbers or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Terry?
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, 4.4, second presentation and review of new policy IH AMC instruction and training in cardio-pulmonary resuscitation. I said that.
This is the second presentation of this policy. Again, with no changes, this is the policy that allows intervention and remedial services during the summer for third graders who are not proficient so that they may move on if they demonstrate sufficient progress.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
I move that we approve item 4.3 as presented.
Second. Questions?
When does that become an issue? I mean, by that, I mean, when is the, is the testing been done or?
In the policy, third graders have to demonstrate proficiency where they can be promoted and there are several criteria that can be used for them to demonstrate proficiency, but if they still do not at the end of third grade, it gives them an opportunity for intervention during the summer. And that intervention allows that if they are showing progress that they may be moved.
But what I'm asking is that, was that effective last year or is it coming up?
This is coming up effective this year. Yes, thank you.
So we don't have any numbers or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Terry?
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, 4.4, second presentation and review of new policy IH AMC instruction and training in cardio-pulmonary resuscitation. I said that.
This is the second presentation of this policy. This is a new policy that delineates what the CPR training should look like and this must be provided beginning the 2019-20 school year.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
I move that we approve action item 4.4 as presented.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments? Terry?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
4.5, second presentation and review of revised policy JFB, open enrollment.
This is the second presentation of this revised policy and this allows us to give preference to students who are in foster placement for enrollment.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
I move that we approve action item 4.5 as presented.
Second. Okay, questions or comments? Terry?
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Item 4.6, discussion and possible action regarding proposed changes to Arizona School Board Association bylaw voting. Okay, and so last time we went through this and do we want to roll down, let's say it's recommended the board consider and give direction on voting of several bylaw changes and proposals for the Arizona School Board Association. And this is done by one vote for the entire board. So, and we can direct that that be done. So we have four proposals, I believe, here, A, B, C, D. Isn't that right? Is there another one?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so let's start with A, I guess. ASBA Governance Committee proposes that if any director or officer on the ASBA Board Directors misses more than one meeting in a given year, it will be deemed they have vacated their office. Okay, you can make a motion that what you want to do with it. Should we take individual ones? I think that would be the best.
Okay, sure. That's good.
I think it would be easier to do each one individual.
So like, it's. So can I, I make a motion that we approve proposal A for action item 4.6?
Second. Okay, so any discussion on that?
They meet four times a year. Well, that's pretty tough.
They've obviously had an issue with attendance. Yeah. Which makes it difficult to conduct business.
I think if you can't commit to the time, then they should have the right to replace you.
Yep. I would agree with that. So, all right. Terry?
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, proposal B, Gino Valley UST recommends that a bylaw may be amended or repealed by two-thirds of the member boards that are voting instead of by two-thirds of the entire membership. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we vote no on proposal B.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments about that one?
I just think since they make it voting electronically, that it should be the whole membership.
Okay, any other? I'm sorry? Was there a second? Second. Thank you. Okay. All right, go ahead, Terry.
Nicole Cohen?
No. I mean, yes.
Yes, we're voting no.
Yes.
Thank you.
No.
Sorry. I made them a motion that we vote no on proposal B.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, proposal C, the ASBA Hispanic Native American Indian Caucus proposal will allow
a seat on the ASBA Board Directors for the President and Past President of the HNAIC and one for the President of the Black Caucus. Do we have a motion on that one?
I make a motion that we vote no on proposal C.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion on that one?
I just don't think there should be any more representation for special groups and...
There already is though. I dug into the.
Well, there is.
Stuff a little more because they want a separate representation because they alternate. One year, the Hispanic leadership of that caucus are represented on the board and then the next year, the Indians are represented. And so they're asking for one of each to be represented.
But they're already represented in their individual boards based on the makeup of their communities.
Right, and they already have bylaws that direct to that happens. So I just dug into it more because when we last met, I wasn't entirely sure what it is they were looking for. Yeah, and the thing is, I mean, I still keep that because of my last name, they think of Hispanics, so I get all the Latino things. And they send me all these things and I'm like, you know what, you have the availability to be on the ASBA board and to be part of that. I don't understand why they separated, but, you know, so I agree with that. I don't think we should do that. Terry, so now it's a vote, no for yes?
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
So you voted no, you said no on your motion.
My motion was to no.
Okay, so we're saying yes.
I'll get it right this time, yes. Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
No.
Nancy Anonie?
No.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, proposal D, ASBA Governance Committee proposes a change that would require a candidate wishing to run from the floor for an executive officer position must provide written notification to the nominating committee and executive director one week prior to the annual membership meeting. And so do we have a motion for that one?
I make a motion that we vote no on proposal D.
And a second for that? Well, I'll second, that's something to talk about. So what's the reason?
The reason that I don't agree with this is because what they're trying to do is silence any candidates from the floor. And anybody who's been in any large organizations know that there's always a core group of people that control everything. And so if you've got a candidate that's running from the floor and they can convince the whole entire membership that they deserve a spot on that as an executive officer, then so be it. But giving the executive committee or the nominating committee a week's notice allows that nominating committee to pick up the phone and call all 200, you know, plus groups and say why this person shouldn't be, they were late to the game, whatever. I just don't see where there's been any history of people running from the floor and taking over ASBA, so I have to question why they're trying to change their bylaw to force it. And I just think it smells done.
Yeah, you know, the only thing about this is I can understand why they want, you know, some information ahead of time on the candidate and I wouldn't have a problem with that. Like if they were at the board meeting or at the membership meeting and had to submit, you know, the written proposal form for that they want to run as a candidate, they should be able to turn that in on the same day. So, but we can't change this. This is either a yes or a no.
This is a week's notice. They have to, if they're going to accept a position, they would have to fill out the information. They would have, I mean, they're members already.
Yeah.
This isn't somebody just come walking off the street that wants an executive position on this board. These are already members. So they already know who even each of us are, what our home addresses are, you know what I mean? They have our information.
Yeah.
I think it's a control issue and like I said, I don't see any reason to change it other than to keep control of who sits on that board and that's obviously.
Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, proposal E, Maricopa UST proposes the elimination of running from the floor for candidates who seek a position on the executive committee. The nominating committee should provide two or more nominees for each open seat on the executive committee to be voted on at the annual membership meeting. Do we have a motion for that?
I make a motion that we, or I propose that we, I make a motion that we vote no on proposal E.
Second.
Okay, any comments on that one?
Same situation.
B and F vote, well, that's even more so.
Right.
The first one said they can as long as they turn the information a week ahead.
Right, this one eliminate.
E and F say no, no more running from the floor. Okay, all right, Terry.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
And proposal F, Oracle EST proposes the elimination of running from the floor for candidates who seek a position on the executive committee.
I make a motion, vote no on proposal F.
Okay, any second? Okay, we already discussed it, so, Terry?
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, and we can, I mean, it's one vote from the board and I would just like to direct Terry to go ahead and take care of that for us so we have the board to take care of the vote for us. Thank you. Action items, 5.1, approval of District 2016-2017 Parent and Community Engagement Plan. Mrs. Walter.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the District 2016-17 Parent and Community Engagement Plan. Parental community support integral to student and academic success and are greatly valued by our district. The District Parent and Community Engagement Committee oversees and is responsible for developing an annual school site parental involvement plan that is in line to the national standards for supporting and ensuring parental involvement in schools. The District Annual Parental and Community Engagement Plan is a mandatory yearly compliance requirement for Title I schools and is available for parents to access at each school. A copy of the plan has been provided for the board to review.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments about that? Terry?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Nancy Anonie?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.
5.2, approval of Lake Havasu High School National Honor Society travel for student internship training. Mrs. Sotner and Mr. Becker.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I'm Jenny Sotner, National Honor Society Advisor, and I have like the.
I'm Lexi Adams and I'm Public Relations on the National Honor Society Board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the Lake Havasu High School National Honor Society trip to Chicago, Illinois, February 9th through February 13th, 2017. And our rationale is the LHH National Honor Society requesting approval of this trip because it is an out-of-state soon event. Leadership is a founding principle of National Honor Society. We look to further improve our leadership field by attending the National Lead Conference hosted by the National Association of Secondary School Principals.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve 5.2 as presented. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Just that they're really dedicated to go to Chicago in February.
Just that they're really dedicated to go to Chicago in February.
Yeah.
You got that kind of close?
No.
How many people? How many people?
Uh, seven students and one advisor.
Wait a minute.
Somebody's buying his pool club.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Seven students and one advisor.
One advisor, and then all, Chicago's more dangerous than Afghanistan. I mean, literally.
I know. The, the conference occasion says Chicago, but it's actually in Lombard, which is a suburb about 20 miles outside of the actual downtown Chicago.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, Terry. Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Five point three. Approval of consultant contract between Elaine Missy Wood and Lake Havestown High School District Governing Board. Mrs. Asire.
I recommend that the board approve a consulting agreement with Elaine Missy Wood that would begin January 50, 2017, through December 31st, 2017. This would cross over the fiscal year of 1617 and 1718. As you know, we have begun the search for a new Director of Business Services, and we are hoping to be able to hire someone that would begin in January. This would allow us to have a consulting contract where Missy Wood could provide the services necessary in terms of assistance should questions arise. And those would be applicable to the current business software that we're using, historical references that we need for contracts and IGAs, and also any current year budget details and explanation guidance for a new person coming into the system. We're asking for a, not to exceed 200 hours and a total expense of $10,000.
I move that we approve item five point three as presented.
Second. Okay. Questions or discussion?
I, I have some questions about the actual contract itself. So it says, um, section two under scope.
I'm sorry, we got to revision because remember, after the work session, we directed some revision. Did you make a new copy of this for the meeting?
You instructed me that it was going to stay the same. No, I didn't.
No, I thought that, I said it was going to stay the same as the revision. I'm sorry. Communication did not...
Mrs. Asire, would you please read the changes? I would be happy to do that. The changes here are that the consultant should only accept requests for services from the superintendent, who is pre-approved by the board, and that any remaining funds at the end of this contract would be returned to the Maintenance and Operation Budget. In each of the places where we allow contact with the consultant, the superintendent will contact the consultant, and the superintendent will authorize all tasks. And those changes are on page one of the contract.
And I will email that out to the board. Did that answer your questions?
I have a couple more. Yes, thank you. Okay. So then, under section three, under compensation, it's like the third to the last sentence. It says, "Benefits shall not be provided to consultant unless already provided by the district." And I want to know what that means.
Okay, so if this individual qualified for continuing benefits, then those would continue to be provided as a retiree. However, in this case, she is not qualified for continuing benefits.
Okay. And, everything else was about who gives authorization. So, everything would come from you.
How, how's that search going?
We actually...
I mean, do you have a dozen candidates, or?
Um, we actually have finalists who are coming back in December for a second interview.
Okay.
And then, we're hoping that, should we have a successful finalist, we'll bring that recommendation to the board in December. And if we do not have a successful finalist, we'll have some recommendations as well.
I think this is, and it isn't money well spent because you haven't spent it yet. Because if you get in someone that's really good and a whiz at it, you wouldn't need this. But I think it could be money well spent. And you ask any superintendent or high school principal, if you let the budget get out of control, you've got a real problem. And I wouldn't want to, as a board member, to try to correct it. And we've got a brand-new superintendent, and I know how difficult it is. And so, I think it's sort of like a contingency thing. It's like insurance to make sure that, hey, if some issues come up, the transition is effortless and you don't run into any problems. So, that's one of the reasons I got out of accounting when I was in college. I said, "I'm out of here," you know, because of that type of stuff. But anyway, I, I think it's money that could be well spent.
It could. Could it be rescinded by the next board?
Yeah, the board has, it says right in the contract.
Ten-day rank cancel. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Actually, I have, because I'm old and forget to kind of write down. Superintendent, is our current finance director, has she or is she one to already have a written policies and procedures manual in place for the duties that she does, the duties and functions that she does in the business, you know, there's a policies and procedures manual?
Not a written manual at this time.
Thank you.
We do not have a written manual at this time.
Um, considering that she is the finance director and she's only an employee until the end of the year, I think it would be critical to request that she do that manual, complete it, so that the new director has a work map, a workflow map. In most senior director positions, it's very, very important to have a policies and procedures manual in place for yourself and your subordinates. But considering that she's the finance director, I think it would be important, and it would also help the incoming director to have some guidance, unless you can't get a hold of somebody. And I'd also like to ask if the board would consider using help from, for example, the Arizona School Board, the Arizona Business Association, the county, or the Arizona Board of Education, or even local professionals to assist with questions that can arise after the current director retires. Committing that $10,000 consultancy doesn't seem to make any fiscal sense because we're, I mean, we just passed the budget and the override, and, I mean, it was very, very difficult to try and communicate and to kind of put their arms around that. And $10,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, but in my house, it's a lot of money. So I guess I'd ask that maybe you consider, you know, reaching out to others and to local and even to other directors in other schools, other peers, get the help. I'm bringing these things up because of two particular audits that were done in the last two years that I'm aware of. And I know that, according to the trust documents, the EBT agreed to hand over audits and whatnot in 1999 to the district and have them included in the CAFRA report. So that's been since 1999. But in 2015, there was a single audit report that showed material weaknesses found having to do with internal controls, having to do with the deficiency in internal controls over accounting records and financial reporting, including but not limited to the district not performing a detailed bank reconciliation for the employees' bank account. It basically was the employee benefit, the trust bank account. And the district did not maintain appropriate records over financial information for the employee benefit trust to determine its net position, its revenue, its expenditures, its accounts payable or cash. And according to the report, the district did not always follow the USFR, Arizona Unified System and Financial Record Card of Accounts. And this is all in the audit. The effect was that there was a misstatement that it could have been prevented or detected, and the interest expense was understated by over $83,000. In the most recent single audit, which was in a preliminary wrap-up, which I appreciate you offering that to the public to be there, the same deficiency was listed as a material weakness, and the same deficiency specifically was also reviewed in that audit, meaning that the deficiencies that were found a year prior had not been corrected, even though there was a recommendation to do so. So, with all of those things being considered, as a side note, specific to the EBT, that declaration, again, it has no mention of a treasurer in its documenta, in its trust document. So there's no, there's no place in the trust document says that we have to appoint, under the EBT, a treasurer. So, but it does say that the EBT has the requirement to hire accountants and other professionals as may be necessary. But instead of doing that, the decision was made, and this was again back in 1989, that the EBT would rely on the district's finance department and finance director to reconcile the funds, as noted in the CAFRA report, and not separate it in its own report.
Marcia, you're getting, that's confusing, the way that you're saying that, because as a representative that's on the EBT board, or the trust board, as well as the school board, what you're referring to in those two audit exceptions, those are things that are being handled at this time because they were supposed to have been done by our consultant. And he was contracting out with our, and the board was actually directing him to do that, the trust board was, with, with our provider, which was Gilzbar, who was supposed to be handling it. And last year, we didn't get what we needed, and we were on it with him, and Missy was all over it, saying, "We need to have this done." It was not something that the district took on. That was not our thing. It just, it was just incorporated into the AFR, and that was information that was fed to the audit team by the, by our consultant.
Right.
Okay? So that was not something that the district was doing as far as the reconciliations and all of that. And again, this year, when this came up, we back hit the roof. I've shared that with our board members, and we are in the process of handling that. So, it was not something that was inherent to that department, because that wasn't something that was being done here. It was supposed to be being done on the outside. And the problem is that our consultant is really not, he's not the accountant person. He's, he shouldn't be. We had Gilzbar handling it, and, you know, we weren't able to get it on a timely basis in the way that we needed it. And so, other arrangements are being made at this time.
So my point with that, and I appreciate you clarifying that, but it goes, it again goes to the fact that the last two years, there was a mention made of an internal weakness and deficiency in the audit. And all of the years prior, I haven't yet to find one that there was any kind of a discrepancy. And if you allowed this to be transferred, or, you know, the EBT wasn't necessarily personally or, you know, the people on the board responsible for that since 1999, I'm just curious as to why it's happened in the last couple of years. But what I'll also say is that the person that you have representing the EBT, the agent, he is not a consultant, as far as I can tell. I haven't, I've yet to see a consulting agreement with him. He's an insurance agent that gets paid, a broker or insurance agent fees. So if that's a question, then...
Yeah, let's, if you have issues with the agent...
Right, and I just want to get back to this part.
Let me just go back to this.
Well, I'm going to finish this part.
Well, could you please, wait a minute, I'm the chair. So, what I'm saying to you is that you have every right to come to the EBT meetings. They're open meetings. And if you have issues that you want to bring up, or if you want to understand what is being done, please attend the EBT meeting. That's the place for this discussion.
And I do regularly. But I'm going, I'm talking about the hiring of consultants right now, the finance director. And what I want to close with is, considering the deficiencies and these types of things that we've seen on a regular basis that were carried out with the current finance department, I would respectfully request that an alternative to the consulting agreement to hire the current finance director be considered, and attempts to be made to find a solution that will not cost the district $10,000, and wouldn't cost us any more money, and could result in the new finance director having access to multiple people instead of just one.
Okay, thank you. And just as a, you know, just as an informational, it's, it's typical in, in business, in school districts, in city situations, that when, if somebody retires, you know, having them stay on as a consultant to be available to answer questions and, you know, steer somebody in the right direction is a thing that is typical in those types of situations. And because we're allotting that amount of money, does not mean we're going to spend that amount of money.
Oh, I totally understand.
Everything is going through the superintendent. If we need, you know, that expertise and whatever, she'll make the call. If we don't, then that money stays there, and it's not going anywhere. It's part of the MNO budget. If we don't spend it, it stays there.
Right. The only thing that I would request that you consider is, because there is no policies and procedures manual in place, that that be addressed. Because even if, even if you do, you know, end up hiring the, you know, the finance director as a consultant, that information in that policies and procedures manual will go a long way to reducing the number of questions, and at $50 an hour, they have to be asked.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes?
There's people in the room here will tell you that I basically take the same stand Mr. Rooney had. And we can't afford to allow the budget to fail. So we need the additional help. But what's disgusting is that we need it as a mechanism. You just took a few days off. You filled in for her. Any good manager should be able to walk out of their business at any time, and their people should be able to take over. And I think it's something that we have to address. Because she could have dropped dead one day, and she wouldn't have been there to consult. We have a systemic problem if we have to rely on a consultant. As I said, I would agree with you. We need to do this only because we put ourselves in this position. But we should never put ourselves in this position.
I totally agree with you. But the problem that we've run into in years past, I mean, we used to have six directors in this, in this facility. We don't anymore. We cut, we cut back on, on staff here so that we could put more into the classrooms because, you know, and people doubled up on duties. We have one director that handles, you know, two things. The finance director handles four areas. You know, the AGI handles two areas. I mean, this, everybody's doubled up because we don't have as many directors as other places.
Like she said about policy.
So when you have, excuse me, but when you have enough staff, or a sufficient amount of staff, and you can cross-train them all, that makes perfect sense, and I totally agree with you. But when you don't have enough staff, it's very difficult to train each member to be able to do the job of a director when you don't have anybody in that capacity. So, I hear what you're saying, but it's kind of like the same thing. I'll go, I'll bring it back to the maintenance we were talking about the other day. We, you know, we had people say, "Well, why don't you have a maintenance schedule? You shouldn't let your stuff, you know, deteriorate." Well, when you don't have the money to do the maintenance, you can have all the maintenance schedules you want. You have to just put out the fires. And so, that's a similar situation that we have with staff. So, just to address your concern there.
Well, I'm just saying, I support what Mr. Rooney said. I'm simply saying we should never have let ourselves get in this position in any extent. And not having a written policy, I've discussed written policies before with people in this room. There is no excuse for that. Well, you know, and, and I like procedures too. I think that you walk in and you see something, and it's a guide to how you do the job. But sometimes, you know, it's like my son's in the military, and when he, they get, and they're getting transferred every three years. But the nice thing is, sometimes the guy will come in a little early. And even though it's, in the military, it's very detailed on what they do. But if you walk in and all of a sudden, it's written down, you're going to run into questions. And the nice thing is, if the guy that has been there ahead of time sticks around for a little while, he can make the transition a lot easier. And it even run into it when you become a principal. You know, all of a sudden, you'd like to have something right there that tells you everything to do. But I know when I became a principal, because we had existing principals here in town, I could call them and ask them, "Have you ever run into this type of a situation?" And they would mentor you, and it would help you. So, I, I agree with you that it's, it's nice to have all that. But, but I can tell you from experience, you got to have time to put in to writing policies and procedures. And oftentimes, in so many organizations, you step in, and you've got to be moving right away. And, you know, I think that's a great recommendation. And I'm sure we could pass that on to the person that's going to take over. But I, I think we're in a situation right now where it doesn't mean you're going to spend that. It just means if it comes up, it's just covering yourself. I think it's just wise to do that.
Well, I think if we don't have a policy in place, or a manual in place, we are going to spend that. And while I appreciate how difficult the job is, it's been, you know, a couple of years, in my opinion, of, "Well, I can't do anything on the budget because I'm waiting on this." And, you know, "I can't do anything because I'm waiting on one, two, three, and I don't know about current year funding." And, you know, "It's been two years of I'm going to resign." So, you know, this could have all been done and handled, and I just don't feel comfortable with this contract. And I'm not going to go into all the details of why, like I did at the work session, but suffice to say is, I don't think it's a good idea. I feel like we need to rip the Band-Aid off, and I feel like that we have resources that we can use. And to Grumpy's point, you know, what if, God forbid, something then happened to Missy? Would our whole entire district fall apart?
Possibly.
I don't think so. That was my point. I don't think it would. So I think we should...
Do I have any other ones?
I think I probably should clarify this, and there was a point brought up in the audience as well. We have, should we hire a new business director who needs training in the Arizona law? That is provided by the Arizona School Business Officials. There are ASBA trainings. There's actually ADE Business Department provides. We have all of those resources that we would... We have all of those resources that we will be taking advantage of. And when we talk about manuals, there is the, I'm trying to think of it. It's, it's, you know, this thick from, it's the financial manual for the state of Arizona from Azbo. And so we do have those manuals. What we don't have is a detailed, you know, what you do every day. We have calendars of when things are due and so forth. So it's not like we have no guiding information.
Right.
Okay. Really what this contract is for is that there's a couple of areas that we may need to have questions answered. One of them is that we're, this is a new financial system to whoever comes in properly. And so there are some things that may need to be explained about this financial system for as long as we are on it, which is certainly going to be the rest of this year. The, the second area is there is some historical information. We have several IGAs, which are intergovernmental agreements and other contracts that in, in working forward on those, we will need some of that historical information. So that would be an opportunity. And then in, just in general, some of the decisions that were made in developing this budget so that the person going forward understands why those decisions were made and how this budget would be developed, those would be important pieces of context that I believe the new person would need to know. I don't see this as being an ongoing day-to-day kind of a training program. We have other more official resources for those kinds of trainings. These are the specific things that may be unique to the position here in Lake House. So I don't know if that explains that a little better.
Knowing that you are not from Arizona, are you in turn taking these trainings and learning the budget procedure as well? Because I know in most districts, the superintendent is technically in charge of the budget.
Yes.
So if, let's say, something was to happen to the finance director, in turn, we wouldn't have to worry about contracting because at that point you would then be able to step in and help with any questions. Correct?
And so the answer is, sort of.
And I'm talking an ample amount of time. I'm not talking a year from now, but I'm saying in a good situation, you would be trained and knowledgeable on the budget and what needs to be done. So we wouldn't have to look at a contract because you would then be that consulting person.
So ultimately, yes, but what I don't have is history.
Yes, right.
And so right now I am going through a series of trainings for new superintendents to Arizona, which also talks a lot about Arizona law and finance and taking opportunities to get those trainings. I do have budget experience in general and so I've learned in terminology, et cetera. And I have invited myself to sit in on those kinds of meetings where anybody else is being trained. I am not taking the Azbo certification. I will clarify that.
Are you planning on to ever or is that something...
To go through the, the actual business official certification? I had not considered that actually.
I'm just, I'm just trying to help for people who are, are not sure that we are in a unique situation. We have a new superintendent who's not familiar with Arizona. So a consulting contract with whoever or additional help from different places is maybe something we need while everyone's getting their feet wet.
It's a good point, but I will tell you this from, from history. There was only one superintendent that we had that could actually put a budget together and out of all of the ones that we had, and that's just because it was his thing.
My comment to that is, what does that say about our hiring process?
It's not, it's not typical that the superintendent would be able to step into a finance director role.
Yes, it should be.
No, it's not.
I don't think so.
It's not.
My understanding is superintendents know the budget.
Well, they should know the budget, but to be able to put it together is another...
It's a different level.
It's a different level.
That's not my understanding from the superintendents, I know.
Well, has she had vacations in the last year, two years, the finance director? So who steps in when she's gone? Who steps in and does her job when she's gone?
She has an assistant. She has the directors, but they, yeah.
There's your consultant, right there. You don't need to hire the current finance director.
Any other comments or questions?
I, just briefly. I have reservations about the total amount, but I think the controls that are in place, the changes made with the contract, the fact that the money cannot be divided at the end of the contract, I think that we've got those appropriate controls in place. I think we've got a good superintendent now. I think we've got to look at her and we have to have faith in her decision-making powers. I'm not crazy about having to go back to the well about corporate knowledge and experience and history. I, I, I will agree with Grumpy. We should have had some type of an overlap period, dual employment period. We should have better documentation, better policy and procedure. But I think given the hand that we're dealt, I, I think this is a, this is a decent contract. I think we've got a way to, to wade through where we're at. So...
And I would say our original plan did involve some overlap, but the timing did not all work out with the new superintendent and where the funds were and, and I totally agree. If we could have had an assistant to our major positions as a succession plan, that would be awesome. And if you guys can figure out how to come up with the money, more power to you because it, it has been, it's not something we didn't recognize was important. It's walking that line of how do you keep enough dollars in the classroom and balance people's concerns about too much administration at the district office. So it's a...
This discussion is good.
It is.
Because as I started out, it's not the consulting fee that's the question. It's how did we get ourselves in this position? That's the question.
Right. And I look forward to hearing your answers. Truly.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Do we have a motion on the floor, so Terry?
Nancy Ananou?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Do we have another?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 5.4, approval of governing board administration travel. This is a slide.
Yes. This item is a recommendation that our new governing board members who are agreeing to attend the Arizona School Boards Association New Member Orientation on December 14th be allowed to attend and I would be attending as well. Additionally, our National Rural Teacher of the Year, Jenny Sotner, is going to be receiving the ASBA Golden Bell Teacher of the Year Award, which is a huge award in Arizona. And so Joanie Everetta, Board President, myself, Jenny Sotner, who is receiving the award, and Jamie Festigl, who nominated Jenny for the Arizona Rural Teacher, are attending the president's dinner to recognize that Golden Bell. And so this also allows for them to stay overnight that night and come back the following day. So the request is maximum cost and the lodging has been reduced from 636 to a maximum of 477 because Mrs. Cox will be providing her own transportation and lodging.
Do we have a motion?
I'm moving to approve item 5.4 as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I have to make a comment. So I, I stated before, I think it's important when you're new that you go to these and I don't mean any, you know, disrespect to Jenny or to anybody else who wants to go, but this is a prime example of where we're spending MNO money, which I have a hard time doing at the expense of, you know, the salary problem that we have. I think Jenny's fantastic. I think that when we're getting awards like this, I think that it's important that the school district doesn't pay for this, like, doesn't pay for somebody to go accept an award. I know there are important awards. I'm not trying to take away. I think it's phenomenal. I know we're lucky to have her. But this is just an example. And to pay for lodging and dinner to the tune of $983 is stunning to me and it's just an example of where we need to cut. And I think it's important that we make those cuts in light of the community passing the bond overwhelmingly, in my opinion, and hopefully the override. This is where we show that we're not wasting the dollars that we have, so...
Well, I think it's important for the staff, people to get recognition and, and so...
I do, too.
Yeah. Yes?
So, and I agree with you. I just wanted to add that the next day, there's an Arizona Rural Schools Association meeting that we will be attending. As a principal out here, it's incredibly hard. We don't go to many trainings. And so something that we saw with the audit with the school hours, we don't have the opportunity a lot of the times, like principals in the metro area, to talk with other principals. There isn't that collegiality among principals, I think, like there are teachers. And so there's really never in this level administrators going to administrators' trainings. And so to me, I understand that it's a lot of money, but, so there's a rural schools meeting. I'm not, we don't, I'm not even asking to go to the actual ASBA conference because that would be more money. So I, I think we're really frugal in what we allow people to go to, sometimes to our detriment.
And, and personally, you know, this went on here because my last thing, I want to go to that and obviously my daughter's getting this award. I don't mind paying for this myself out of my own pocket. And so if you want to take it all out and I will just write you a check, that's fine.
I didn't want to make it personal. I was just trying to highlight...
It's personal and then you know it. And so that's fine.
See, that's unfortunate. It's not personal. I, I don't know what else to say. I'm trying to make an example. We can never be specific about where we're cutting except attrition or the teachers that have retired. And this just came right up, you know?
We actually have cut these attendances as well because we used to go to the meetings twice a year and also the county ones and some of the other trainings that they had up in Flagstaff and in different places. And we've cut all of those back to one time a year is what the board attends. And that's at the law conference only, that's all. So yes, there have been made, there have been cuts and we have done that. And so, you know, we're very proud of that.
Yeah, I see that. You, you've cut the new board members to not even attend the full conference. I noticed that. You're only allowing them one day instead of the three days that I was afforded as a new board member, which again, I think it's important when you're brand new to go. But, you know, we can pay for those resources.
Yeah.
I, I get it in the mail. For $25, I can have all the conference material printed and given to me. I get it. But it's unfortunate that you think that this was personal because that had nothing to do with it. I was just, this was the one specific instance.
Don't worry about it. I will write a check. It's not an issue. It's not an issue. So just reduce the amount to whatever that is. Terry, I don't know what it is for the dinner and the whatever that I would like to attend and I will attend it. So it'll be, it'll be on me. Okay. So however, that has to get adjusted, whatever. Okay. And we have a motion on the floor. I take it. So let's have a vote, please. Or we have to make an adjustment.
As amended.
If they're all in agreement, we don't have to make a...
Okay, we'll just make it as amended.
This was the maximum cost.
Okay, so maximum, so it could be under. Fine. Okay. Go ahead, Terry.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Ananou?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Do we have another?
Yes. Okay. Item 6.1, superintendent's report.
Thank you.
So the first item is the gifts and donations and I would like to acknowledge, we, we receive so much from our community and we talk about, a lot about the cash donations. But one of the things that we didn't realize is that our community PB&J Water services all of our RO systems for free. And so that is about a $2,000 contribution every time they come out and do that for us.
$2,000 per call?
It's the, for the, for the district-wide servicing of all the RO systems. They don't do it every month, but...
Oh, I understand.
Yes.
Every time they go out, it's two grand?
Yeah, I understand. All the filters. Every time they change all the filters at all the schools.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and we do have RO systems, of course, at all of our schools, all of our drinking water. And then just to highlight in terms of the cash, like Havasu City Fall Fund Fair, the donation to the district, district was $4,076 and that goes to the different clubs and so forth. And Relics &amp; Rods donated to the principal's accounts in the amount of $2,400. And then as we're talking about the community donations, I know last week when the override was behind and we thought that that was going to be a no on our override, there were, really there was an outpouring from the community. And so I appreciate those of you who sent me the information because I don't do much with social media, but some of the examples, Jimmy Johns donated lunch to a couple of our different staffs. Lake Piteris provided a lunch, a staff lunch into one of our sites. The, sorry, I'm going to make sure. Star Cinemas actually offered free movie admission to all of our LHUSD teachers from Wednesday through Sunday of this last weekend. And we had several teachers who took advantage of that. Car Toys offered free car washes to any teacher on November 10th through 17th. So that is still going on. They just have to show their badge. And that would actually include staff as well. Shea Bones, this was so interesting to me, the Shea Bones Steakhouse and Tapas Bar, they are offering 50% off, five zero, not 15, 50% off, an entree for teachers every Wednesday night through the end of this fiscal year, or calendar year, rather. And they have challenged other restaurants in the community to do so, to show their appreciation. Small Cakes donated cupcakes to the school sites. Bob's My Auto Shop gave 50% off labor until the end of 2016 if you show your LHUSD badge. And the Chamber has invited all of the teachers to the Chamber Mixer on November 17th for free at the Quality Inn and Suites. And so in the, in the process, as they're all saying, we support our teachers and we voted yes, they have no control over the outcome of the vote, but they felt so appreciative of everything that our teachers do and our staff do. And that outpouring from the community was, was just amazing to me. One of the, one of the messages that came from the Small Cakes group of, group of parents that got that together was, thank you for all that you do. Know that you are awesome. You are valued and appreciated. Cupcakes and balloons don't fix everything, but they sure do make life sweeter. So, so I just wanted to say, these don't show up on our donation logs. We know at the beginning of the year, we see all kinds of things coming into our classrooms. And this is another example. And then the final thing that I would like to mention, if I may, the, it was brought up about some of the inappropriate things that are happening in terms of bullying. And one of the areas that has been a huge concern is the internet safety component, which a lot of the cyberbullying, cyber predators, there's, there's very much that parents need to be aware of and perhaps you're not aware of. Many of our recent incidences that we have dealt with have been, have been involved text message, emailing, Instagram posts, posting with, I forget what it's called. Somebody who knows will have to correct me, but basically you put a fake name up there and become however you identify yourself. And so we are very fortunate that we have scheduled on December 5th, which is a Monday evening from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Lake Havasu Library. This has been scheduled for a while, but the DA's office is providing a free internet safety presentation, which will target parents. It's available to any parents. They just need to RSVP to a school site or to the high school. And talking about cyber predators, the issue that we have with sexting and some of the implications of that and cyberbullying. And so I wanted to, to let you know that that is coming up. This has gone out to everyone on our in-district email list, but I wanted the community to be aware of it as well.
I'd like to make a comment. You know, it's gratifying. We see that Curtis Townsend, he graduated from here and, you know, got a good education. He became an engineer, first in his family that graduated from college. And he, over the years, I can't remember what year he graduated, but he works for Raytheon in Tucson and consistently sends money to the district. He didn't have to do it, but evidently our impact on him was a big one. And then also the Sweetie Scholarship that I don't know is awarded $20,000 and I think it's 19 or approaching 20 years. That was another graduate of here and he funded that and it's benefited a large number of kids that have graduated. So, you know, you do good things by kids and a lot of times the community doesn't hear about it, but these people have a real connection and want the same for other kids that are down the line are going to graduate. So the only reason I bring that up is if, if he hadn't gotten a scholarship, and he did get that Sweetie Scholarship, if he hadn't gotten it, his chances of going on to school were going to be nil. And so every time I see his name, it makes me feel real good and he's consistently done it. And I'm sure he could put his money into something else that would be immediate gratification, but he sends it back to the district, so...
All of the small donations add to a large impact.
And it's awesome to know that the community did that and I think it meant a lot to the staff. I mean, because, you know, just to know, even though they thought at that time the override was going to fail.
And some of those community businesses are now run by people who graduated from the district.
Right. Yeah. So that's awesome. Okay. Anything else? Any updates? We're good? Okay, we'll go, let's have a motion for adjournment.
I'm looking at the chair.
Thank you, Terry.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Ananou?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Joe Navarada?
Yes.